Okay. First item on the agenda for the work session. Our discussion topics with the 2017 General Assembly session. This was something that Delegate Carl Anderton requested. Said he would like to have an exchange between the council and himself. So, good to have you here tonight. Appreciate you taking the time. Right here is good.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Sorry. Sorry about that. Is this the hollow way wing of the table here?
Hollow way side.
All right.
Right side. See, it's the right side of the table.
It's left of me.
It's left of him.
Oh, my gosh. So, the big question is, you know, with the TV, does it have cable or not?
Oh, yeah. We can get a lot of channels while we have some guests.
So, can we have a special meeting on Super Bowl Sunday right in here?
It'll be right here.
Everybody's pulling that, right?
It'll be right here.
If you're any good, I'm gonna take that home with me to watch.
Are you taking it home? Is that right?
If you can get us a little bit of finance from the state.
Well, we're gonna talk about that. Some buffalo wings, things like that. Maybe not for food, but, uh, yeah. But, uh, no, it's just a couple of things. I just kinda, as we, as we get ready to go in, you know, wanted to kinda let you know, you know, what I'm hearing and what we may need.
Sure.
From you as we move forward this winter. You know, the big priority for me is still how we use our revenues. I totally get the significance of that. This county is short nearly fifty million since the cut was made. And, you know, Salisbury is seven million and about, about a million, million or so between Delmar and Fruitland. So, I mean, you're looking at nearly sixty million taken out of the economy of the shore basically by a pen stroke of the budget back in 2009. So, you know, and it's an interesting thing because the governor, you know, is fully committed to restoring it and the legislature wants to restore it, but it doesn't seem to be, the dots aren't connecting quite right. So, we're gonna, we're gonna look into that a little more this year than we have before because now we're starting to kinda figure this out and so we can have a little more fun with it. Sprinklers, you know, Senator Mathias and Delegate Sample Hughes are gonna be resubmitting their, their bill from last year. The bill passed the senate and it was up for final passage on the House floor when the clock strikes midnight. And in Annapolis during session, when it hits midnight, whatever you're doing stops. And so, it was on the board and before they could call the vote, it hit zero and it triggered it and it went away. And so, that was, that was interesting, seeing something that you know was gonna benefit your area kinda, you know, the clock ran out on it literally.
Right.
And so, that bill will be back. I'm sure that, that they'll be asking for some, uh, some type of endorsement or help from the county with that bill presentation this year. And as you know, the governor really came through for us with the, uh, the BAT system repeal and putting it back where it belongs in the critical areas instead of, you know, across the entire peninsula.
What kind of resistance do you think that'll have?
I think we'll have, I hope I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is that somebody's gonna submit a bill to try to put that back in place. And so, if that does happen, you know, I'm praying it doesn't, but if it does, we're gonna need a lot of help. Uh, you know, we're gonna need some numbers to kinda signify the importance of, of anything we can do to help make it easier for somebody to live out their dream and build a home.
Cause it was, I mean, in reality, it was established through regulation. It wasn't really established through legislation, right?
Right. And so, since it was done through that process, it can be changed by the governor as well. But if it's done through legislation, then it has to be changed by legislation. And so, you know, and as much as, in the same fashion as the PMT, you know, they had a bill and for that, you know, we, we able to lobby successfully to allow it to be done through the regulatory process. It's much easier to have one person change something as they see whether or not it's, you know, positive or negative as opposed to getting it through, you know, two legislative bodies. So, that's something we're definitely gonna be, you know, keeping our eye on and hopefully, you know, what I'm hearing is not true. I would be pretty excited if somebody was messing with me about that bill. You know, same thing with, uh, with our ag, with our poultry and our, our farmers, you know, there'll be some, some legislation proposed once again this year. You know, I've heard, you know, the usual suspects, the Poultry Litter Management Act, the chicken tax, but I heard some discussion in the hallways about, you know, either the camp, the state stepping in with zoning or a state enacted moratorium. So, you know, these are things that are, I don't, if it was submitted, I don't see it, you know, getting much success because I don't think then, you know, my folks, friends across the bridge would want us telling them, you know, what to do with their local zoning issues. I mean, we elected a county council for that reason. And, uh, you know, I think that that's, that's the way it needs to be. Budget stuff, in addition to how we use our revenues, I know the governor's gonna try to do an increase. We're gonna fight really hard to make sure it stays there this year as opposed to last year where we lost the increase. It was during deliberations between the House and the senate, there were some money taken and reallocated. So, we're gonna try to hope and work to make sure that doesn't happen this year as well. And my understanding is, you know, Purdue Stadium, the last piece of that funding is in the budget and then, then we'll be finished there. And, uh, you know, I've been having conversations with the Maryland Stadium Authority about the Civic Center. I know that you have some, some plans and some ideas for things that need to be done there. So, I'm just constantly keeping our initiatives and our projects in their mind. And so, when something does come up, it'll be an easy recall to say, oh, yes, you're right, we've been talking about this for a year now instead of starting from scratch. So, so we do that with projects from SU to school construction, you know, and then we have West Salisbury underway and we're already talking about, you know, other schools that I represent like Beaver Run and Delmar and Fruitland as well. So, just the more conversation we can have with folks, I've come to learn, the better it is when you actually need something done because, you know, it can be recalled rather quickly. So, so.
Any questions?
You know what I found interesting about the fire sprinkler bill? State of California was the only state in the Union that had that ordinance, that law. And then we come up and force it on the local jurisdictions.
Yeah, you know, it's one of those things, you know, I, we came in kinda late on that that was done before us, but, but from what I've heard, there were some counties in the state who had done it back in the nineties and, and so they kinda looked at it as, as a success for them and so they went ahead and pushed it statewide and it's here now.
And it's the counties that dictate what the world districts do.
It's those counties that, sometimes you're right. Sometimes you're wrong. Sometimes we're pretty successful, but we're gonna, you know, we're gonna see if we can do some way to offset it. I mean, the goal, you know, that I've, with most folks I've spoken with, you know, is homeownership. You know, you wanna have that place to establish roots and, you know, so we wanna make sure that that's as affordable as possible. And you guys did a great thing with the impact fees. I mean, that's, that's phenomenal, especially in this economy to, to really go out like that, you know, so.
Great to do that.
And, you know, I know the governor set up a program that, that helps the priority funding areas. It's about twenty percent of the geography of the county for this particular year, for 2017, with some down payment assistance and using the repeal of the impact fee as leverage against that. So, hopefully this year, some folks that are moving into the urban core will be able to take advantage of that. But we gotta do something, you know, for folks who wanna live, you know, out on Nanticook Road or, you know, or out, out in the country, you know, so.
Councilman Kilmarnock?
Um, well, kinda along the lines of what Larry was saying, that, you know, there's various some counties that have a community college collective bargaining and I know there's a push to make that statewide, which would really hurt Warwick and, you know, some of the, you know, Chesapeake College, you know, I mean, we would help some of the rural ones. So, what, I mean, what are you hearing about that?
Well, I mean, you know, I expect to see that bill again this year. You know, and I'm hoping that, uh, you know, we can, we can continue to hold it at bay until, um, till the economy catches up, you know, to allow for it to happen. I mean, it's not something you'll be able to stop forever, but if we can stop it long enough that we can absorb it, you know, and, and, you know, I don't, I don't think collective bargaining is necessarily a bad idea. I just think you should be able to be in a position economically where you can, where you can truly negotiate, you know, and, and not have to, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul, I guess is a lack of a better term, you know, and so, you know, it's, 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 it's sometimes difficult to explain, you know, the, uh, the economy here on the lower shore, especially in Wycomico. To my colleagues who live in Montgomery County and Howard County, I mean, it is two, two different worlds financially speaking and so, but, but we're getting there. You know, they're starting to understand that, you know, they think that, you know, the entire eastern shore is kinda like Ocean City and northern Worcester County and that's not, that's not the case. And so, but we're making great strides. I mean, fortunately, we have an awesome governor, I think, who, who really has taken care of us. I mean, anytime I've needed any questions answered or anything, any help, you know, he's been more than willing, you know, to really look out for us on the shore and I think it's, that's awesome to have that.
Joe?
I've got a couple of things. Revenue shortfall, you know, I've been reading some of the papers from the Annapolis area and, and what are you hearing about, what are you hearing about that?
Well, I mean, that's, that's true, but it's, it's, it's one of those things that I, from what I've read and understood is, is when they make these spending projections, they kinda go with the highest number, you know, and so sometimes that's not what really happens. And, uh, you know, it's kinda like me when I wanna lose weight. Say I'm gonna lose thirty pounds, I lose three, you know, so I kinda overshot my estimate a little bit. So, I think that's kinda what happens in these, in these committees. And so, you know, we didn't hit those projections, but I think we're in line with kinda where the governor expected us to be. So, I'm expecting a little bit of an adjustment this year in, in spending, which is, which is okay. And, but we also, you know, we gotta remember that, you know, he has reduced some fees and some tolls and so, you know, if there's more money, you know, in our pockets, there's gonna be less in the state coffers and that's, that's another bad thing, so.
There's only one way to control spending, that's control how much you give them to spend, right?
Right, absolutely.
The other thing, um, is the Board of Ed is looking for a, sorta like a guarantee or something to get their recent, um, current project off the ground. And I think the county is kinda looking for a letter from the state as kind of a guarantee that.
The funding will be there.
The funding will be there.
Yeah.
And, um, and I applaud the county executive for not bringing that to us without some kind of guarantee. Is there any chance of getting the state to move on that, so?
We can certainly look into it.
Okay.
I mean, we, yeah, we can certainly look into it. If somebody will get, I guess it would be from the executives department, I guess, if they give me some marching orders, we'll run up there and, and, and we'll, we'll see if we can get something, you know, I mean, they'll either say yes or they'll tell us no. And if, you know, they say no, we'll ask why.
Yeah, I don't think we should be.
Yeah, right.
Making a bridge loan without some kind of guarantee that it'll.
I understand that, absolutely, yeah.
As anxious as they are.
Sure, sure. No, and I know it, I mean, that school is a priority at the state level. Everybody talks about that, that situation with, with West Salisbury. So, I, I don't see it being something too far out of reach that we couldn't, we couldn't do.
Have you, um, I know there's, I had read where there was a Justice Reinvestment Act.
Yep.
That came up. How do you think that's gonna play out? Cause there's a lot of give and take with that. I think it's a very good effort.
Absolutely.
As far as what they're doing, there's some pros and cons to it.
Yeah.
I didn't know what your take was on that.
I think it's a great start. I mean, it's gonna be something that'll be liquid for a while, hopefully forever, that'll be constantly adjusted. But, uh, you know, I think, uh, you know, instead of, you know, just throwing somebody behind bars, I mean, we need to give them an opportunity to be, you know, a, a real member of society, you know? I mean, it's by the grace of God that I'm sitting at this table and not at some table up the street, so.
Right.
You know, so, but I mean, you know, it's just, you know, I, I think, you know, that we shouldn't be just housing people. We should be getting them ready to come out and, and contribute, you know, and get a second chance.
I thought it made sense from a cost savings measure as far as really redirecting funds from, from the actual jails and incarceration to some type of, uh, method of recovery.
Yeah.
Made a lot of sense, so.
No, absolutely. And, uh, you know, along, along with, along those lines, I mean, there's gonna be a big emphasis on the opioid issue.
Right.
Here on the shore. And so, you know, we're gonna need a, we're gonna need help, you know, trying to support that legislation, whatever's proposed that we get our hands on. That's a benefit for us here on the shore. I mean, you know, we're, we're talking about it, we're trying to figure it out. We know we can't arrest our way out of it. You know, that doesn't work. So, you know, we've, we've gotta, we've gotta find a way to collaborate public, publicly and privately together to get folks treatment. And then, I mean, I, I think, and maybe it's just me, but I think the best way is to make sure somebody has a job, you know? If you're busy working, it's less time you got, you know, hanging out. And, uh, so, but, you know, that's, that's a whole nother level and we're, we're constantly looking at ways to improve and make ourselves, we're, I think we're a great place to live and a great place to hang out and play and grow your, grow and, and build your family, but, you know, we have to become more attractive to, you know, people who wanna start a business, people who wanna expand and people who wanna relocate. That's the key, I think, is relocation, you know? I mean, we're so close to Delaware and Virginia and, and we need to make sure that, you know, we're able to compete on all sides. But we're getting there. I real, I feel it.
We are.
You can just feel it in the air when you're walking around. I, I don't know if it's just me, with that three pounds I lost, but I just, I feel it, you feel, the air feels lighter.
Well, I found it.
Did you? Thank you.
We, uh, we really appreciate you taking the initiative.
Yeah, absolutely.
To come here and to join us. You know, we always, we always work through Medco and a lot of initiatives you're, you're more than aware of, but there are at times when Wycomico County itself has its own interests.
Right.
I know over the last year, there's a lot of communication back and forth where, you know, we, we were, I received calls from you saying, you know, what does Wycomico County think about this?
Right.
You know, bill that's, that's trying to get through Annapolis? And that's always good to get feedback cause we don't always know exactly what individual bills are, are going to impact us locally. And, uh, you know, with delegates and senators there to sort of communicate those, those warnings.
Right.
That's, uh, that's always a big plus, so we can send letters of support.
Right.
And if needed, testimony.
Absolutely. And I think that this is just kinda the next evolution in that, is coming ahead of time saying, this is what I'm hearing, you know, hopefully this comes true and this doesn't come true, but just in case I wanted, you know, so you could kinda develop your mindset because things will be happening, you know, as you remember from last year. I mean, they're, they're really quick. Usually I'm calling you out of breath, running and, you know, I need a letter, but I needed it two days ago. Can I have it now, type thing, you know, so.
Right.
But again, you know, you guys have been great. Every one of you answers the phone anytime I need anything and I, I just think that's awesome.
Delegate Anderton, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your service.
Yep, we'll see you soon.
Take care. Second item on the agenda for the open work session is the capital improvement program. Mr. Strausberg, I know you're not here completely for entertainment value. Pleasure to see you.
Evening again.
Welcome back. See you again. Well, we received the total package from you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I have the, have the department heads here this evening who probably have the most spending in line from inside the county general fund, so.
Right, okay.
Happy to answer any questions you have or clarify anything that you need clarification on.
Okay. I guess, um, I guess as an overview, some things that I was looking at were the, the bigger picture as far as our, our general obligation, indebtedness, et cetera. I know that the, um, projection for, um, this fiscal year was originally a hundred and thirteen million and it actually came in around a hundred and nine million. I'm assuming maybe part of that was not so much not spending, but maybe restructuring some of the, from the prior monies, bonds or anything, did that affect?
In terms of the debt load, John?
Yes, yeah.
In terms of total debt, I could look into that for you and get back to you on that.
Right.
Can't give you an answer off the top of my head right now.
Sure, I just, um.
But I'd, I'd be happy to do that for you.
Okay. But the, I always worry about whether or not, how the debt service is and how we're doing as far as, you know, what our total capacity is. And it looks like right now and percentage wise, we're about almost fifty-one percent of our total capacity based on forty-eight percent a couple of years ago. It's, to me, it's kinda going in the wrong direction, but I know, you know, there are some years we have to do some spending and some years we have to back off of those. So, but overall, I think we're staying rather steady.
And you may recall that, that our, our funding plan this year called for us not to borrow any more than what's being retired.
Exactly.
So, we'll keep, actually that ratio should improve because our, our base is going to improve. So, I, I would see that percentage coming back in the right direction.
Yeah, that's why I thought for the next year's projection of, of the indebtedness, it was a hundred and twenty as opposed to a hundred and thirteen, cause I thought it would've been steady to, you know, with that number. But again, I don't want it to cut you off guard.
No, sure, I, no, I can come back to you on that, that's fine.
Okay. Questions from council members on particular items and?
I've got a question.
Sure.
Um, the sheriff's office, the, um, the money that was allotted in fiscal year fourteen for the engineering study, have they done that? What's the status on that?
We haven't, no, we haven't done, Larry, we haven't done the engineering study because we haven't, haven't located a, a site.
That was my second question, the site.
We haven't located a site at this point in time.
Third, third question would be, um, are the plans for the current building, once it's.
It would be repurposed.
Any idea yet?
No, not at this point in time.
I know, we're always running out of space, so I understand it can be used.
Because you'll notice in the CIP that we have money in the CIP for some, some improvements to the current building. That's to keep the building in good condition. It's got.
Right, you have to maintain it.
It's got some roofing issues, it has some mechanical issues with heating, um, heating and air conditioning. So, we're trying to keep that existing structure in good condition and it still has to be occupied.
Right.
For some period of time. Uh, but we have not yet located a site. We've looked at a couple, but we haven't zeroed in on anything. So, to start engineering right now, till you have a site, it's very difficult to start the engineering.
Got you.
Along that same line, with sheriff, are you gonna say something?
Grab your mic, John.
Along that same line, did, did you, uh, did you look at redesigning the, uh, building rather than just say we need a new building?
Yes.
Okay, nice answer. Physically not possible or?
I wouldn't say that it's physically not possible, John, but, but the size of the building is, is an issue. And, and you recall when Lorraine was here and we were talking about the EMS system, we, we, we really want some distance between the sheriff's facility and where our dispatch center is going to be located for the very reason that you gave, Larry. We really anticipate keeping the current nine-one-one center at the detention center and relocating the sheriff at a distance where if there was some sort of a catastrophic loss at corrections, that it wouldn't be impacting or vice versa. So, establishing that distance is, is good practice.
And you've gotta, you've gotta understand that the sheriff's office, the building has different needs because of the business that they're in.
Absolutely. The, and you'll see this with corrections as well. Over, over time, the, the design, size and layout of law enforcement facilities and correctional facilities has changed for any number of reasons, not, not the least of which are federal requirements. So, to repurpose that existing building, I, I'm not sure that it would really be wise forecasting the sheriff's department's needs over the next twenty, thirty years.
I think they've outgrown it.
No, I, no, they absolutely have. There's no question that they've outgrown it.
Well, the, initially I know from what you've said here and I remember it from last year where the twenty-five thousand dollars was first proposed for study. And I had said, well, where is the study? And that's when everybody said, well, the study was never done. So, now we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars for a study and after the, or is there, it's, in, in last year, as I understand it, there was a hundred thousand dollars proposed for a study?
For the initial study.
Okay. And I don't believe that study's being done, but we're already suggesting that in this year's CIP, we look at a commitment of six hundred thousand for an architectural and engineering study beyond an actual study to see if there's a need. So, it seems, unless I'm getting it wrong.
Yeah, no, I, I think that we've established, John, that there is a need. We, we, and remember this is a planning document, so.
Sure.
The, the funds that we have aligned for each one of the years are planning funds. The twenty eighteen numbers are probably the hardest numbers that we've got. We could anticipate that we would probably spend that money, but, I mean, quite frankly, until, until we have a site that's appropriate, it's very hard to go much further. But we don't wanna be in a position where we have a site and then we don't have the funding available now to move ahead very rapidly or expeditiously with the civil engineering and the building design.
Well, it's. And I understand makes, cause it makes perfect sense. My, the only concern that I had is in establishing this, this new, you know, five-year plan.
Right.
For two thousand and eighteen, the very first item on the agenda is the six hundred thousand dollars for an architectural and engineering study, but we seem to have cast aside the twenty-five thousand dollar study and then now it appears that if we've cast aside the hundred thousand dollar study, I'm not a fan of studies to begin with.
No, no, remember, we, we, the money, the money that is in, the monies that, that is in the plan from previous years is still in the plan and available. So, it isn't as though that money not being spent is a problem. Spending the money when you don't have a longer-term plan is a problem. So, again, until we have a site that we believe meets the sheriff's department's needs and other criteria, we don't wanna be spending the hundred thousand dollars that we had in the plan last year because why would we spend that money?
I, I understand and I, I, I agree with you. Again, I, I'm not, I'm not a fan of studies at all, but it appears as if, from the way I'm reading this year, that it's been decided that there's gonna be an eleven million dollar commitment to a building, which seems somewhat arbitrary without a, without any type of study or structure in place beforehand.
Well, no, what we did, okay, now I understand where you are.
Takes me a while to get it, to get it across.
I understand where you are. No, actually what we did, that, the matter in which we arrived at the, the estimated eleven million dollars was basically to go back to the city's police department building and we looked at the, at the architecturals on that building. Mike liked that building, believes that it's a good layout. We had those costs at the time, we took those plans.
Right.
And we updated those plans for today's costs. That's where the eleven million dollars comes from.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, it's a best guess right now based on a building that the sheriff believes would suit his needs. Now, that's a two-story building. I don't know that we would build a two-story building. That's site dependent, but, but that's how we arrived at that.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I'd rather do that, I'd rather do that and spend a hundred thousand dollars to come to the same conclusion.
No, we didn't.
No kidding.
No, we didn't spend that money and, and we're looking for sites ourselves. We haven't hired anyone to look for sites for, so, again, until, until we have that site that, that meets the sheriff's parameters, we're not spending hard dollars.
Yeah.
But we're planning that if we find that site and council approves that site and we're happy with the acquisition of it, that we're not held up for another fiscal year to really start heavy lifting.
I would hope we would try to find something that we already own, so we wouldn't have to buy more land. That would be the ideal situation.
Land that we already own?
If we could find something that we already own, it'd be ideal. If we could find something that we already own, it would be ideal. If we could.
If we could.
Yeah.
I just have two, two comments, uh, one was a que- just a question on the layout here. You've got under general services, three health department projects, um, two of them for the portal health department, one of them for the Fritz building, and then health department has its own subheading, is that because it's building maintenance versus?
What, what we've done, and, and let me explain that, that's a very good point.
I had the same question.
What we've done is that we, we have, we believe that it's appropriate that the investments in any county-owned building be shown under general services, because the county is responsible for the maintenance of that structure and the major systems. So what, what you're seeing under general services is just that. If the county owns the building and it needs other ma- you know, structural work, roofing, major systems, we've captured that under general services. You recall that when I gave you the, the, the overview on the CIP, I mentioned that we have the county, um, general services department, department people, um, assessing every one of the county-owned, owned buildings, so that we have that consolidated in one place and can prioritize those needs in one place, as opposed to each department doing its own thing with the building that it's housed in. Those, those, those other requests under health, Matt, are more.
Interior.
Health systemic, yeah, you know, they're virtual, um, you know, wiring, that type, you know, that type thing. So those are things that are transportable from one building to another, as opposed to things that are not. It's the best way I can explain it.
And now my other comment I had was, I'm, I am happy to see the Westside Collector Phase Three on there for completion. That's good, you know, we already bought the property, it's good to go, and get that finished.
Now.
There. Um, the Board of Ed, CIP, one through five priority listing, is that in the plan to fund the, the near eight million dollars? Refresh my memory, is that going to, um, cause the, uh, maintenance of effort to be higher next year?
No, it has no impact on maintenance of effort.
Mark.
Got a couple of questions about the Purdue Stadium thing.
Why am I not sure?
This thing's kind of like hobbling horses on it.
We toss the coin, he, he runs.
I got Larry sitting me, he's sitting next to me here, so you know, you know, I know.
I'll balance it out.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. Um, so in last year's CIP, it's talked about in two thousand and fifteen, it had, I think, one point five eight million dollars. Was that money that the county was supposed to have spent last year, because I don't see it on, noted in this year's CIP?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Steve, Steve, Steve Silver, I'm gonna have Steve come up to walk you through that whole spending plan.
Okay, all right, yeah, because there's, there's, numbers are different than last year, so.
Understand.
Yeah, okay.
He can walk you through the reasoning for it.
All right, sure.
So the question is about the one point five eight million from the county?
Yeah, and two, I guess that was two thousand and fifteen, I see, from last year's.
Yeah, that money, are you asking what's happened with that money?
Yeah.
It's in the process of being spent right now, we're doing the seat replacement.
Okay.
Uh, video board replacement and the structural phase two.
Okay. Um, so it's, it's just, it's four hundred thousand, right, on, on this year's CIP, so that, um, in, in.
For Purdue?
Yeah, for, for two thousand and fifteen, so for the, for last year's CIP, they had one point five eight million.
Correct.
And for two thousand and fifteen, this year, that number is now four hundred thousand on, in this year's CIP for two thousand and fifteen, that number's changed.
Okay, I'm, I'm not familiar with.
Okay.
The old CIPs, as far as that goes, but.
Okay.
I, I could speak to, um, the current funding.
All right, and, and then, you know, now it's one point three million dollars for this coming year.
Correct.
So how much, has, has our total number changed then? I mean, you know, because these are shifting numbers from last year to this year, it seems to be.
Yeah, the total project is outlined in the twenty-year lease agreement, and that has not changed. The, the one point three for next year, the bulk of that is the state funding that Delegate Anderton spoke of, uh, it's nine hundred and eighty, I believe.
Okay.
Um, two hundred of that, at the time that we wrote this, two hundred of that comes from the franchise, which is in the agreement. Um, we may recoup some of that this year, but, but in that plan, that's two hundred, and, and the only thing we're asking from the county for next year is, is a hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay.
And that, that has not changed from the beginning, the, the original commitment, um, we're just gonna finish that out with the, with the one twenty.
All right, so when it says an additional request to the county of a hundred and twenty thousand, that's not, you mean, that's just additional for FY eighteen?
Correct.
Not additional on top of the, okay.
Yeah, that's just the complete, what the original.
Okay.
That's a change in the cash flow.
Okay, gotcha, okay, that alleviates my, my confusion, and so, but the roof, the additional funding for the roof is additional, separate.
That's new, yes.
Okay, and we, we've already talked about that, okay. Um, all right, that's, yeah, that, that's all for.
Yeah, it seemed like we sat and spent an awful lot of time on the, the lease, um, and how we were gonna make plans for the next twenty years. Um, and this came up as well, I'm surprised that this wasn't part of that whole process, unless I'm missing exactly how it's supposed to go down.
Are you talking about the roof, John?
Yes.
Yeah, as, as I said, at the, um, at the introduction and the overview, th- this is why we've tasked general services to do a comprehensive analysis of every single county-owned building, and the stadium is a county-owned building.
Right.
We, we, we should have, we should have known that that roof, uh, was nearing the end of its, of its useful life. However, I would tell you that the, the, the shorebirds would look at that, at the building itself, at the structure itself, and say, look, that's a county-owned facility, you know, the, the, the franchise is gonna pay for those things that, that are, or is gonna help pay for those things that are franchise-related, the playing field, the seats, you know, the scoreboard. But the franchise itself in pro sports, they're not gonna participate in the cost of the, of maintaining the structure itself.
Again, it almost falls into the general services category.
It really falls under general services, and, and, um, I, I will admit, and I will say, that the county, we should have been ahead of the curve on that. This seven hundred thousand dollars should not have come as a surprise to us, it unfortunately did, and, um, that's why we're, again, expediting as best we can, comprehensive surveys of all of our buildings. We can't, we just can't have these kinds of surprises, we have to.
To prevent this from.
We have to plan better than that.
To prevent this from happening again, how often will general services be doing their analysis of all the buildings in the county?
We would, we would be, we would be reviewing that on.
Is it gonna be scheduled?
It's gonna be, it would be on an annual basis, Larry. We would get our baseline.
Yes.
And we would plan for, uh, those things that we believe need to be done, we would incorporate that into the CIP or into the departmental operating budgets, because some things would be done in the course of, of routine maintenance, but, but we have to have, we have to have a baseline, what our needs are, how we fill that gap as expeditiously as we can and make it affordable, but then, how do we prioritize that annual operating spending as well? Because again, um, to, to some extent, uh, the, the squeaky wheel's been getting the grease. Those departments that have really been on top of their buildings and their systems have, have come forward in past years and said, hey, you know, we really need to, to be addressing this, this is gonna be a problem. And we've made it a priority within that department, but what we need to be doing is standing back and looking at it systemically and saying, okay, how does that stack up in terms of priorities across the county with the resources we have? And further, um, we should be looking at it on a systems basis. In other words, if we're looking at roofing, you know, if we have roof needs across the county, we shouldn't be addressing those onesie-twosie. We should be bringing in roofing contractors or consultants and saying, you take a look at the needs that we have, that we believe we have for the coming, coming year, for the coming planning cycle, and we'll get better costs and we'll get better quality that way, as opposed to, to patchworking it. And to some extent, we've been patchworking, and we need to change that.
I agree.
The, um, also with the modernization, uh, there was a notation here, it's in fiscal year, one point three million will be funded. And then it says, this is an additional request to the county of a hundred and twenty thousand, which is about ten percent difference there.
Yeah.
What, what hap-?
Can you explain that?
Yeah, what happened there, Steve?
Um, so what happened was, um, in the twenty-year lease agreement, uh, the state and the county agreed to split fifty-fifty, is two point oh-two-five million dollars. The project, in addition to that, also had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which was the clubhouse renovation, that was the very first phase. That was not part of the two point oh-two-five, that was already spent, so we haven't technically done our, our full two point oh-two-five. That money was spent with the clubhouse renovation, so the one twenty is just to fulfill that obligation of the fifty-fifty split with, uh, the county and the state.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I remember, I, I believe I remember that discussion came up when we were talking about the leasing.
Yeah, so, so what, what's outlined in the lease agreement, um, we're not going beyond that, other than the roof that, what we talked about here.
Any other questions, uh, reference, no? The, um, seems like we're getting a lot of state grants, I mean, it could be, it could be just another year, is this, um, are, are we seeing more state grants coming in? Because there's so many projects that were coming in for wrecking parks, and I thought, boy, we're deciding to spend an awful lot of money on wrecking parks, no offense.
It's worth it.
Now, those, those state grants are, are fairly, they're fairly typical. In, in terms of state grants as a whole, you're right, John, the, the, you know, state grant funding is, is, is declining, it's not increasing. But we feel very confident about the grants that we've embedded in the, uh, in the CIP.
Good.
If the, and if the grant doesn't come through, the project doesn't launch.
Okay.
It was good to see a state grant paying for a large part of the Shoemaker Park parking lot repair, that's, that's a mess there.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I was glad to see that.
Yeah, so, yeah, but yeah, seventy-two thousand dollars, you know, by the state and eight thousand by the county, that's, that's not bad.
That park's used a lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and of course, that will have handicap access, right?
Now, the, um, the one I, I wasn't aware of, and kind of wanted some information on, was the Cedar Hill Park rental cabins and bathroom renovations.
Sure.
Um, just kind of curious as to what was, um, you know, the funds would, I, I'll read it so that the public's aware. Uh, new project for, uh, two thousand and nineteen, totaling a hundred and five thousand. Uh, the funds would purchase and install small one-bedroom rental cabins at Cedar Hill Marina. And additionally, the project would renovate the existing bathrooms that have foundation issues and update the sinks, et cetera. So, and the bathroom portion is seventy-five thousand, so the total funding would be from county PEGO. Um, I was curious as to, as far as the small one-cabin rental cabins, what, can you enlighten me as what, what we're planning to do there?
Um, the idea was to, to make it a, a possible overnight attraction for folks, if they wanted to, to rent a cabin and either, uh, go out on their boat or, or just make that another tourism attraction. But as far as the, the bathroom facility goes, if we were to do that kind of overnight activity there, it's really not sufficient at this moment. Uh, the current building, the foundation is beginning to sink a little bit, we're, we're seeing some cracks in, in the walls. So that, regardless of what we do there, needs at some point to be addressed, but, um, the idea of the cabins was, was something we talked with the executive's office about, to allow for some overnight stays there.
Uh, I, I love the idea of cabins, I think that's, that's really a great idea. Um, I just didn't understand, as far as the new project totaling a hundred and five thousand, you've got about seventy-five going for the bathroom portion, that leaves about thirty thousand for the cabins, I'm wondering how many one-bedroom rental cabins you can get for thirty thousand dollars?
About thirty.
This is upscale, I didn't realize that.
Does it have run of water?
But I was curious, if it's suggested here that the whole total project's a hundred and five thousand, I, I didn't get the numbers on, on the cabins. I, I like the idea, I just don't understand how it's being done that cheaply.
Yeah, and, and quite honestly, they would probably, with the, with the bathroom facility, they wouldn't be well outfitted as far as cabins go, they would be probably one-room. The idea would be, folks would be probably on their boat the majority of the day, they would use it for sleeping accommodations, so they'd be fairly modest, but, um, those numbers are, are a ballpark target at this point, we could look further into that.
Well, since this is FY nineteen, this is not, I mean, this is, it's, it's gonna be flushed out over the course of the next year.
It's a planning number.
Yeah, but I, I was just curious, I mean, like I said, I really like the idea, um, I would didn't, I was curious as to how many cabins everybody was thinking about in this long-term planning, and the funds just were a little curious to me, it seemed a little bit low.
Sure.
How do you, this is, I guess, a discussion for next year maybe, but how do you see it actually facilitating, somebody pulling up by boat and being able to use these cabins, we'll, we'll be locking combination on the doors, we have to get in touch with somebody, just, just wondering logistically how.
We went to Edgewater Mall and looked at, uh, Camp, what's that camp's name?
Hey, Bob, grab the mic, Bob.
Yeah, Camp Letts.
Camp Letts, uh, uh, Edgewater, and a lot of those cabins were basically same type of cabins you would see at James Island State Park. One bedroom's just efficiency, maybe just a light bulb in them, and that would be it. The other part being the fact that, what we'd hoped to do is to, to bring people down, almost like the tiny houses, to bring people down that where we could get them to stay, rent, throw in slip for, for three or four days, whatever they stay. We have a lot of people from Pennsylvania come down here and do fishing in the bay, that type of thing, so they'd be able to bring their boat, and we would, we would limit a couple slips that we could, you know, offer that as part of the rental part of it, so, enticement.
Right.
And, um, talk to them, I've also talked to MTA about taking some of the old MTA buses out of Baltimore and making them tiny houses, the cottage. Uh, they, they will give us the buses if we can find somebody that knows how to, to remodel the inside of them. So, um, but that's, you know, that's all those kind of ideas with the tiny houses, the cabins at James Island State Park. Uh, same thing we're gonna be working with, with Pirates Cove, that, uh, Julius Stripling's office or, uh, group would like to do, to put like overnight stays within the forest.
Yeah, and I think Councilman Holloway was asking who's gonna come unlock it, and who you're gonna pay, and so forth.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of my point, it's just, just like, because nobody permanently down at Cedar Hills, so.
Well, there is not, anybody, yeah, that's just gonna be probably come through by and get the office, or.
Yeah.
Get the key and go down there, uh, we would have to arrange that, there's not gonna be a whole lot of cleanup, sweep it out, and that's it. They would give Mr. Strausberg something to do by. It would be, uh, you know.
Man the rental house.
He'll go away from retirement out of director administration to a cabin manager.
Just make sure you have screens on the doors.
We don't have mosquitoes down our way, you got, you're right?
We some of your way.
Yeah, that was, that was my question, I was, I was glad to see that, so, any other questions for, uh, Mr. Miller?
I do like the idea.
Yeah. Thanks, Steve, you're doing a great job, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Getting back, uh, I know Matt had said he was glad to see the Westside Collector, uh, Phase Three being put in here, uh, I think everyone's glad to. Councilman Kilmer, did you say that you were glad to see the Barron Creek Road restoration in the project in here?
I think my view on that's pretty clear.
Yes, yeah, so we're glad to see that in here as well. The corrections, a lot of money being spent in corrections, George. The, uh, only other thing that I had was that with, um, with Warwick Community College, the Manor Tech and Hazel Student Centers, I'm, I'm assuming, uh, was it just decided at this time that any, any renovations or improvements there were just off the table for a long?
Yeah, Ray pushed that out.
Mm-hmm, okay.
We did that at his request.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody? All right, well, good, we, um, we appreciate you taking the time, look forward to moving forward with this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Let me find out where I am on the agenda here, folks. Uh, second item on the agenda is the watershed improvement plan, uh, Mr. Young?
Saving the best for last.
Appreciate you coming and taking the time, uh, I, I thought it would be good for the, the council to get a full understanding of what's involved in the WIP program. I know that, that it comes across our table occasionally here, some of the issues, um, and I know we certainly hear a lot about it when we go to makeup.
Yes.
And, um, I just thought it might be good to get an overview, um, you know, as far as where we are with the WIP program, where the state of Maryland is with it.
Sure.
And how everything, you know, is coming into play over the next year.
Sure, um, so just as a brief background, there's a lot of acronyms with the WIP. It's the Chesapeake Bay Pollution Diet, or the TMDL. Um, this was an effort to clean the Chesapeake Bay, um, the Chesapeake Bay Foundation sued the EPA. It went all the way to the Supreme Court, and it was determined that, based on the Clean Water Act, not, not sufficient, um, efforts were being made to clean, uh, the bay for three main contaminants, nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment. Uh, these contaminants, two of which are fertilizers, uh, can cause algae blooms or, um, keep sunlight from getting down to the submerged aquatic vegetation that causes shellfish loss, um, you know, so, so crab and oysters and all of that have, have suffered, um, a depletion of oxygen in the water. There's a host of, uh, I'll say beneficial issues with excess nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment getting into the bay. So the federal government, through the EPA, went to each state and said, you need to develop what they call the Watershed Implementation Plan. This is the WIP that we affectionately call it here.
And you, to interrupt you very quickly, you said the federal government, actually, this was something that was done.
And to interrupt you very quickly, you said the federal government, actually, this was something that was done pretty much through executive order?
Yes, President Obama was, was involved with this as well, and it was due to a lawsuit over the Clean Water Act. So, each state was told to put together their own, what they called it, the Phase One Watershed Implementation Plan. So, these Phase One WIPs were developed by the state. There are six states, and the District of Columbia have some portion of their drainage area, their landmass draining to the bay. So, each state was told, put together a plan as to how you will, you will clean up the bay, how you will reduce the nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment. The states in turn went to each locality, each municipality, and asked the same question, how, how, you know, please put together one of these WIPs. It was known as the Phase Two WIP, so they went to the counties, they said, and larger cities, depending on like Baltimore was held separately than Baltimore County. And in our case, Salisbury was, was cut out of Wycomico County in terms of the response. So, we put together, and, and a lot of this was handled wonderfully by the Planning and Zoning Department. And they put together this, this WIP that said, these are some ideas, that they're not set in stone, these are, these are how we believe the county will react and, and address this. Now, one thing to consider is that they break the efforts into four main sectors. There is the urban stormwater, and that's where we tend to spend most of our time. There is wastewater, so all the wastewater treatment plants are upgrading to enhance nutrient removal, such that they are removing more nitrogen and phosphorus from what's being discharged into the various water bodies.
When you say we, are you talking collectively as the county and the city?
Yeah, yeah, collectively, yes, all, all the wastewater sectors, all the treatment plants in Maryland, Virginia, and the other states. There are the septic sector, so all the individual septics, and then there's agriculture. Now, right now, the only sector in Maryland that's looking to meet its goals is the ag sector. So, they, they've had nutrient management plans for some times, and Maryland agriculture has been ahead of the curve in a lot of cases. Urban stormwater is where we tend to focus our energies the most. We are looking at, from a septic standpoint, what bat systems do go in, do help the county slightly. With old neighborhoods with failing septics, if we were somehow able to either connect them to a municipal system or have some sort of community system, like a package treatment plant, like a smaller version, we could possibly help cut that septic load down a little bit. So, these are things that, you know, we, we would like to pursue plans for, just to see, is it feasible, is it economically feasible? Similar to the lighting district I talked about previously, we could do some sort of, you know, sewer district if, if a neighborhood is, is, has enough failing septics to warrant something like that. But going back to urban stormwater, where we spend most of our time, as you're aware, having the CIP conversation recently, the county's been investing at least two hundred thousand dollars a year in the CIP. In some of the public works and through some of the drainage monies in the roads, Division of Public Works, additional monies have gone towards these WIP projects. So, the WIP project is typically, I'll say the most basic form you can think of is a stormwater pond. Putting in a stormwater pond to help treat water before it goes into a river or a creek and, and things like that. So, from there, we look to install these WIP projects across the county. Ideally, we focus on publicly owned land, so there's no land acquisition cost. And then, we also look for the biggest bang for the buck, so we're looking for how much impervious surface, so that's a harder surface where the water cannot infiltrate into the ground. That means rain that hits, it's gonna run off, that can cause erosion, that can wash off, say, brake dust or, or oil hydrocarbons dripping from vehicles not being maintained properly. And then that can get into our waterways, so by putting in a pond or some of these other structures, which I think later, I could give a presentation when the TVs are operational, where, where I can show photos of some of these and what we're doing within the county, because, because the picture speaks a thousand words. But these WIP projects go in, and then with each project, we estimate how much nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment is being removed by this. What we then want to do as well, as we're, as we're looking at these projects, is we look at, what is the total cost, and then what is the equivalent cost per pound removed? So, what does it cost us to remove a pound of nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment respectively? So, where, where we are is we've had about eight hundred thousand dollars given so far through this CIP process, and we've leveraged almost nine hundred thousand dollars in grant monies. So, for what money the county's been given, it started with planning and zoning, and now Public Works is, is running with it, with, with backup support from planning and zoning.
Who's doing the, who's doing the grants, does it come from DNR or who's it coming from?
It, it varies. Some of these grants are not consistent, so that's why we, it's hard, it's hard for us to put them in the budget to say we, we anticipate getting this grant. A part of it, sometimes Governor Hogan provides more money, it's a mix, primarily state and federal governments, or state and federal grants are available. One in particular that we've done well with is the Chesapeake Bay Trust. I think that's through license plate sales through Maryland and Virginia, and has to be in one of those two bay states. The National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, NIFWIF, is a wonderful donor as well. University of Maryland has an Environmental Finance Center, so, so there's options out there, and it, and the bay cleanup effort is recognized as an issue. So, there's, there's a lot of money on the table, and we've been leveraging it as, as best we can, what, what we've been given going forward. One of the things that we are looking at pursuing, and we have a potential grant available for that, is doing a watershed study. Now, this is paying a consultant to look at a portion of the county and say, where can we put these practices to get this, the biggest bang for the buck? Historically, we've, we've gone for the cheapest option, all right, what are the public properties, so we don't have the land acquisition costs, and also make it visible. So, so try to get some education out there, so we, we have some at Pemberton Historical Park, we have one at the Upper Ferry. We've installed two recently at the larger Public Works facilities, at Solid Waste and at Rhodes.
What do you have at Upper Ferry?
So, there's a small buyer retention.
Okay.
And there, there should be a sign out there, so if you're, if you're stuck waiting for the ferry to, to return, you can read about some of the, the wetland grasses planted. We put some at our, the Solid Waste and Rhodes facilities, so these large sections of impervious surface that have, you know, various trucks and equipment on it, they're now being drained to a water quality practice before it leaves the site.
So, initially, I, I know, I know you two guys can remember that, John, initially, it was in the millions, and, you know, in some counties, it was billions of dollars as far as what the state was going to force, force the counties to do. And of course, the ten largest counties were the first ones that were impacted. Since then, they've, it's set back an awful, I mean, they've stepped back an awful lot on this. What are we seeing as far as our obligation locally, I mean, we could possibly do absolutely nothing, but, you know, I think it's important to continue on in those efforts. But how do we see it as far as the pressure in long-term in achieving those goals and costs?
That, that's a great question. Right now, the way the, the way the process works is we submit a two-year milestone, and I believe I, I had that, one of our latest ones, just kind of like the WIP. It's, it's a, it's soft language to say, we will look at these things, we will pursue these things. And the state takes all that, aggregates that, so Maryland does this, Virginia does this, Pennsylvania and so forth, and then they present it to the EPA and say, this is what we are doing. The EPA has been grading the various states, and where I'm going with this is that Wycomico County showing the efforts we've made, showing that we have a lot of shovel-ready projects and we're getting grant monies to fund it. We're showing, we're making due diligence towards meeting our goals. We are, we are doing efforts, there are some areas, namely, the, the, I'll say, the, the state that's sort of being held to the fire right now is Pennsylvania. And they are, you know, the, they're talking about doing a similar phosphorus management type tool, and, and what they're, what they're doing, it has not been sufficient to date. So, what, what I feel is gonna happen at first is that they're gonna focus on the people who are doing little to nothing and release what regulatory hammers they have. Currently.
Depending with the new administration, what happens as well.
Yes. The, the, and on that, what would have to change ultimately is the Supreme Court ruling to upheave the entire effort. On, on the upside, what has been done to date has shown measurable progress in water quality tests. So, so it seems like the efforts being made are, are moving in the right direction. A lot of money has gone into treatment plant upgrades, because that's, that's a big, big-ticket item. You know, there's arguments as to, and, and that goes back to the bat system repeal. A septic tank far away from any water body, is, is that nitrogen reaching that water? That, that's a question that's, that's to be answered. But from an urban stormwater standpoint, the denser the area is, the more impervious surface they have, the more pollutants they have leaving their sites. They have less groundwater replenishment, so there's, there's emphasis on, I, I wanna say reducing impervious, not completely removing it. A good example of what we've, we've tried to do here is like with the San Domingo, was it the Teen Adult Center that was demoed? We will be planting trees on that parcel, and that land use conversion from impervious surface and open space to trees is actually, we can count towards the bay cleanup effort. So, one of the things we look at, not just going out and doing a WIP project, is what other projects are there out there that we could add a water quality element to?
Didn't you suggest that with the, with the Barron Creek issue?
Yes, so Barron, Barron Creek has, has opportunity as well with the old pond bottom to do stream restoration and, and other efforts there. Typically, what we try to do, and I mentioned the roads division earlier, if we have a area of flooding concern, we try to look, can we add a water quality element to that when we fix that flooding issue? So, it's a lot of, instead of just going out and putting in a buyer retention or one of these WIP projects, it's, all right, we have something going on, can we put something in? If we find the public safety building where the sheriff's office is now, if we see that, you know, it was built in a low-lying area, if we can put in a practice that catches the water before it gets to the building, then we can do that, and then we can claim water quality treatment in addition to solving, say, surface water getting, getting underneath the building, so.
And you would need a new sheriff's office.
No, no comment on that. But, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's an effort of trying to, with the money we have, trying to use it as efficiently as possible, trying to leverage it to get additional grant monies, because that's, that's a hot item right now. And, yeah, and then with, through, through watershed studies, we can help identify some larger areas. Barron Creek or any of our dams, if we're able to put in wetland benches, you have significant drainage areas in, to the tune of square miles coming to a location. If you can treat all that in some format, that will be a larger price tag project that we're not quite ready to put in the CIP yet, but.
We could maybe, as you said, it's, it's happened to bring in funding from other areas as well.
Yes.
So, to a certain degree, with the Barron Creek, if we were to, you know, wrap it up in, as a WIP project, there could be maybe funds from other sources to help offset those costs.
Totally, totally, and, and the bigger the projects, typically the efficiency is improved. So, these, these granting agencies are willing to give more money to a project that removes nitrogen at a thousand dollars per pound versus fifty thousand dollars per pound, so.
Weston, how's the state determine where we stand on the WIP programs?
Right now, it's, it's, I say, all on paper. They've developed a model, there's, there's a, I'll say, federal level model, and then the state has a, has a separate program to help determine that. So, what we go in and we enter into this program, how many types of WIP projects or BMPs, best management practices? So, it'll be how many ponds, how many buyer retentions, how many wetlands and so forth, engineered wetlands. And then, what is the drainage area going to each, or impervious surface going to each, and then that will put out a number. So, what we do is we have to enter all that information, so we keep track of what BMPs we have in the county, public and private, and we need to make sure that they're being maintained. So, if they're, if they're overgrown and not working, we can't count those, which we're, we're doing fairly well in that category. So, yeah, we, we basically enter these into the program, and then the state takes that and adds it to their state data. But how they determine what we need to clean up is based on land use. So, they ran this model some time ago, and this year, they're supposed to run it again, so we're all sort of waiting on what the latest results will be, and then see how, how that changes things.
The county, last couple of years, has been twenty percent ahead of the goals that have been set by the state?
In recycling, yes. In the, the bay cleanup effort, it's, it's a bit harder to gauge, and that was one of the questions I had when I, when I first came back to the county, was, was where are we in meeting, meeting our goals? And that's something I think we're, we're still working through, and, you know, by, by proposing bigger projects, let's say Barron Creek as an example, how does that help us get, taking a large chunk of, of our, what they call the waste load allocation? The, the amount of nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment we're asked to remove. So, yeah, that, I think a more comprehensive presentation in a few months could be helpful as, as we pull that information, and then hopefully, with the TV running, we could do some, some photos and stuff to help explain all that.
That'd be great, Joe.
Where does, where do we stand compared to some of the other local counties, are they keeping up like they should, do we monitor what they're doing? You know, some of them are probably more sensitive to the bay than we are, like Dorchester County.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's, I would say from a grant standpoint, we're, we're well above any of the sister counties. With, when you look at like Worcester and you have Ocean City, which is urban, but that drains to the ocean, so, so that's not part of the bay cleanup effort, whereas every part of Wycomico drains to the bay. So, we have to look countywide, whereas Worcester can look at just the portion that's draining to, say, the Pokomoke. So, with that, yeah, we're, I, I, I think we're, we're ahead of the game, at, at least compared to our neighbors. So, going back to the EPA focusing on Pennsylvania right now, from the Maryland level, they're more likely to focus on a county that's not pulling their weight compared to one that's at least showing due diligence, you know.
You mean the state?
Yeah, the state.
The state, yeah.
But, but then again, the, the EPA has, has been known to come pay visits to localities, especially if they feel the state's not carrying, carrying their weight.
But we're pretty much on a voluntary pro, uh, plan, because, I mean, we're not one of the ten major counties in, in Baltimore that was, that was first directed to come up with the TMDLs. It's been very voluntary on, on the county, on part of Wycomico and the other smaller counties, right?
For now.
Right.
They have a permit program, we called the, another acronym, MS four, it's the Muniscible Separate Storm Sewer System. Those bigger counties in, say, Baltimore City or a Phase One, the Phase One is the big one, typically over a hundred thousand people, there's density requirements and all that. And that is, that is the regulatory hammer the state and the EPA have to make those counties and city do what, what they want. Phase Twos tend to be a smaller regulatory permit, the city of Salisbury is under a Phase Two now, and their whole, I believe they collect their stormwater money as part of the water and sewer bill. So, that's how they're funding their program, I don't think it's mandated as to how they collect their money, I'm not fully up to speed on that. However, the, the requirements based in the Phase Two permit almost dictate that they collect some money for that. There, we, we don't have an. There, we don't have enough information to fully talk about it now, but parts, the more urban parts of Wycomico, the state is looking at putting us under a Phase Two MS4 permit. That would then give the state the regulatory hammer to make sure we are doing these WIP projects and so forth. So, that's something that, as we get more information and the public comment period and all of that, we'll forward that on. So, yeah.
Questions?
Have you looked at Worcester County or Somerset to see how they do their water sewer districts?
In terms of water and sewer districts, not yet. We haven't been necessarily focused on that 100%.
I saw where Worcester just approved more campsites at that, well, not Frontier Town, but Selbyville, that campsite and it had something to do with the water system, water and sewers.
Worcester kind of backed their way into a county authority.
Yeah, one of the things, and there's a state law in the books, that community systems have to be, I guess can be given to the county to maintain. Now, the county can give that to a third party and like Maryland Environmental Services is one that'll do it.
Contracts.
You could create a county water and sewer authority or sewer authority, either one.
That's why when we did Village Downriver, we specifically did it that way, with the anticipation that maybe at some point in time, you might want to go further. And we actually met with Worcester County and Somerset County to see exactly how they structured their system.
Yeah, and depending on, one of the, I'll say, one of the benefits of having an organization like that is if you have multiple treatment plants and say one isn't quite cutting it in nitrogen, but you have another plant or multiple plants that are over treating in terms of nitrogen, sometimes they allow a balancing, so they look at your average and say, all right, overall, you're doing well. We're not going to hammer that one treatment plant. Whereas if that was your only treatment plant, they could say, you know, you're not meeting your regulations therefore, you know, here's a consent order.
What do you favor? Do you favor individual treatment centers or do you like, do you favor the decentralized system?
I think it comes down to economics. In some cases, centralized helps, but it costs, you know, the further you stretch it, you need more pump stations and that means more chances for overflow, more equipment to maintain at a certain point.
Unless you go back to the really old, old system of trucking it back and forth, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, and that goes back to costs, you know, you'd have to consider the fuel and the quantities. And, yeah, that comes down to the scale. I could see if we look at several neighborhoods that are near each other that are too far from a municipality doing a multi-subdivision package plant that tries to treat those. If, and I think in an ideal situation, if we can have municipalities willing to enter into these service districts without demanding annexation, that would...
What do you think, Wayne?
That would be, that would be another opportunity. Now, we would need to make it fair so that it's equitable for them to give up their treatment plant capacity for county properties. And sometimes they do that by doubling the water rate or something like that. We could also look at, given there are WIP credits to taking septics on the sewer, we could look at splitting those credits as another way of sweetening the deal. So, that won't work in all cases. Again, if you're really far away from a treatment plant, the amount of pump stations and the energy to run those would probably kill it from an economic feasibility standpoint.
Right. Any other questions from anybody?
But with that, I think at a later date, doing a more comprehensive presentation where we can touch on specific projects we've been working on and, yeah, where we'd like to go in the future.
Yeah, whenever you want to put it together, you just let us know and we'll put it on the agenda for you.
Okay, great.
Great, we appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Entertaining motion from council if I could to adjourn so we can go into closed session.
So, move.
Second, all those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.